Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, August 7, 2023. I'm pleased that we have a full house tonight. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Oh, here. Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter?
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Willen?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, but prior to that, I'd like us to observe a moment of silence for those residents of our community, those families in the Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park that suffered horrible loss and the tragic loss of life this past weekend, then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone for coming tonight, and those of you who are joining us virtually, we welcome you as well to the August 7 City Council Meeting. The first series of items on our agenda tonight are Proclamations and Presentations, and I want to note that for those of you who may be following the agenda items before the meetings, we have moved up as an agenda item in overview and an update by Chief Jim Sharp with the West Pierce Fire and Rescue, folks who will give us an update on the loss there at the Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park, and we'll also hear from our city manager with regard to city efforts in that regard. First, we do have a proclamation declaring August 6 through August 12, 2023, as Farmers Market Week, and for this, I'll have our recreation coordinator Sally Martinez join me at the podium to receive a proclamation from the council. Well, we are certainly pleased to have you here, Ms. Martinez, to receive this proclamation on behalf of all, not just the vendors and all of the residents who really enjoy the farmer's market, but truly, this is a tribute to you and your staff for doing yeoman's work and putting this on to the point where it's become, you know, wildly successful, and people just love it out there. But it is farmer's market month and week, and so we're going to celebrate that as well. So on behalf of all of us here on the city council, we present this proclamation. Whereas farmers markets are engines of economic impact for communities and provide families with access to healthy foods and agricultural products directly from Washington farmers and small businesses. And whereas Washington has some 160 farmer markets in over 90 cities and towns around the state, they attract over 4 million shoppers annually and each create a place of beloved community connection. And whereas farmers markets serve as significant outlets for new businesses and family farms with lean budgets to hone their skills, develop their products, grow a loyal shopper base, and build experience which can lead to the creation of a brick and mortar store. And whereas farmers markets support the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities, and they preserve farmland and open space, adding to our quality of life. And whereas farmers markets also support artisans, prepared food businesses and other vendors, as well as increasing sales of neighboring and local businesses. And whereas farmers markets are a key source of fresh nutritious food for everyone, and thanks to market sponsors, we can provide healthy bucks to youth who can try fresh fruits and vegetables at no cost. And whereas farmers markets are managed by dedicated community leaders who are driven by shared values to support local farmers, feed their neighbors, create access to all while contributing to a healthy and vibrant community. And whereas Lakewood's farmer's market has grown each year and is an activity that our residents and visitors look forward to every year, it provides a positive reflection of our city. It creates opportunities to have a positive, interactive experience, all the while providing education to residents about their food and where it comes from. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims August 6 through August 12, 2023 as Farmer's Market Week here in the city of Lakewood, and we encourage residents to visit the farmer's market on Tuesdays through September 19 from 2 to 7 p.m. at Fort Silicon Park. Proudly proclaim the 7th day of August, 2023, all of us, under our individual and collective banner, as council members here in the great city of Lakewood. So thank you very much, Sally, for all you do. So I'll let you say a few words, and then we'll get up, and I think the city clerk is going to help us with a photograph, but we'll open this up and present it upfront after you've had a chance to say hello.
Thank you so much for your continued support at the farmer's market. Just hearing all of these things that it offers on so many levels just is a reminder of how robust this market is and how it brings the community together. I think we all remember when it started here at City Hall and to see it grow and flourish, and people come from outside the city because they love our market so much is really remarkable. So thank you for your ongoing support of this wonderful community event.
Very good. Come on up. And I just want to say a word, having been here a few years. Not only did it start here in the city hall, but the seed, shall we say, was planted in the American Lake Conference Room around the table when we chatted with Ms. Dodsworth about, gee, wouldn't it be great to have a farmer's market here in Lakewood? So it's grown tremendously since then. So thank you. Okay, next, we are pleased to have a presentation from our friends at Lakewood's Choice. And so I'll have Marcos Ari and Lisa Watt-Banks. Go ahead and come on up to the podium there and welcome. Good to see you.
Thanks for having us. Hi, well, my name is Marcos Audi. I'm the Coalition Coordinator.
Yeah, and I'm Lisa Watt-Banks. I'm the Program Specialist with Lakewood's Choice, and we want to extend a thank you to Deputy Mayor Mary Moss for inviting us here. We really appreciate the opportunity. And we also want to thank Parks and Rec, City of Lakewood, who is our fiscal manager, and they've been a huge supporter of us and the work that we do.
And as you can tell, we included Mr. Cameron Furfield as part of our team. He's not Lakewood Choice Coalition staff, but he acts like one, and he's actually showing up like one. And we need to acknowledge as well leadership team, Sally McDaniel from Greater Lakes, Missy Mon Almando from Consejo Counseling, Diana Sullivan from the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club, our very own Shannon Bennett from the City of Lakewood, and for Clover Park, we need to clarify that is no longer Rebecca Sprague, but we have Greg Davis filling in for now, and we are to look forward. I believe he's going to be doing it from the remain from up in the new school year, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we go to, I was going to lag. Okay. Okay, we got it. So Lakewood Choice, so we are a non-for-profit community coalition. We actually funded by the Washington State Health Authority to the A Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative, otherwise known as the CPWI. Our primary focus, we are focused on reducing youth substance use through increasing awareness, reducing access, and building pathways to healthy options for youth and families. When we talk about increasing awareness, we look at the community as a whole, not just a particular youth, not just a particular student. Now, Lisa will provide a little more background and history, but the bulk of work that we do is with local community members to achieve our goal by increasing awareness, reducing access, and building pathways to healthy choices, options. So some of our current partners are the Clover Park School District, Lakewood's Boys and Girls Club, Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, Pierce County, the PC2, which is the Pierce County Coalition for Developmental Disabilities, PC2, Consejo Counseling, and Spring Brook Connections in City of Lakewood. But again, that's some of our partners. Lisa, if you want to provide some.
Yeah, so Lakewood's Choice has been in the city of Lakewood since 2013. We started with a focus in the Spring Brook community, and now I've gone beyond that. And both like Marcos and I are part-time employees with Lakewood's Choice, and as you mentioned, the funds come through the Healthcare Authority, and then the city of Lakewood is our fiscal manager. But we really rely on the community to help us with the work. So an example of that is we've paid for an employee from the Boys and Girls Club to go to training, and then they're going to start helping us run support groups in the fall at Taiyi Elementary School. We've also paid for a parent in the Spring Brook community and somebody that works at the City of Lakewood Library to be certified to train parenting classes, and they help us bring parenting classes into the community. So that's sort of the community work that we really rely on, because us as part-time employees can't really be out there doing the work. So it's wonderful to bring the community in and have those opportunities to spread the work.
Just to clarify, this is not a, it's not an ask. It's just one thing for sure that we need to get out there, through the funding that we get, we get to do things, but the funding, as you may know, under your position, it can be very, very, very restricted. And so collaborating with community members and even taking donations and volunteering with others, we get things done in such a way that is going to be impactful to the families locally. So, yeah. I do need to mention that Ms. Lisa has been with the coalition from, God, 2016. I'm the newly arrived last year, July last year. I made my year last month.
Yeah.
And one thing that I find of, you know, great commitment is being able to see families and youth to, you know, strive and do better in community as well, because the work needs to be done. I want the, I'm getting off subject, but one thing that I was telling Lisa that I took pride on is seeing the big billboard as you come off Bridge Board, and you see that the billboard helping bring in awareness in a different meaning to what it is when we really think about our perception of harm when it comes down to use of alcohol as community, and you see the billboard. And we campaign with, you can campaign a statewide department of health, and through the funding we get, we make sure that we find key locations to display those billboards for our youth or our family, for people to go through the city, see it. So I went off. So so how, the way it works in the big picture itself is for the preventive substance use. As was planned, CPWI, funding come through us. There are four domains that we look at. The individual, the family, the school, and the community as a whole. Nationwide, community coalitions are suggested to have representation from 12 different sectors. However, we are required to have a different sectors represented within our membership and leadership as coalition. And those sectors is the school representation, the parents that you representation, community, local government, healthcare, youth providing youth servant providers in behavioral health, law enforcement, faith-based. One thing that we are fully aware that is going on in the city of Lakewood is a transition within the police department. The new chief taking on the role and what have you, but that's one thing that we longed, and hopefully at some point we get to have representation from law enforcement as well. So the way it works again is really, I don't want to say it's simple for us to understand and continue to learn. The concept is as simple to understand, I should say. It is all about increasing protective factors, community opportunities for pro-social involvement, caring adults, and healthy options, reducing risk factors, the disconnection to the community, the early intervention of youth, and those fiber attitudes to use, they do need to be decreased as well, the family problems and the academic barrier. So increasing protective factors, decreasing risk factors is our work.
Do you want to go to the next slide?
Yeah, I'll go to the next one. So what we offer, what does it look like in the Lakewood community? As Ms. Lisa was made reference to, there are some programs and activities that we do, curriculum-based support groups that she's facilitating on site at two different schools. She'll tell you about in a moment. Incredible Years, Anya Simpehulis, Guiding with Choices. Again, the one of decision is, we don't like to call them parenting classes, parenting workshops, but it's more like, you know, support groups, support sessions for our parents, all right? There's also the Clover Park School District Mentorship Program, we'll tell you more about in a moment. The After-School Prevention Club, on side of the Clover Park High School, Projects Success, the Public Awareness Campaign, I was, I was made reference a moment ago. And we'll go over to our action plans just briefly.
So this is the major message from the curriculum-based support groups that I facilitate at Lockburn Middle School, and I've been doing those since 2016, and I typically have the opportunity to facilitate six to eight support groups in a school year. I'm usually seeing eight to 10 students per group. And it's really my passion. It's what I really enjoy about the job. I usually typically meet with youth starting in sixth grade, and then in seventh grade, we might have them involved in a prevention project. Eighth grade, they like to continue and work, maybe help out a Red Ribbon Week activity. So it's been a wonderful opportunity. The support groups are eight weeks, and we meet with youth once a week. Lockburn allows us to do it during the school day, which has been awesome. It's usually during an elective. Sometimes during lunch. It depends on what their schedule is. And we don't use any scare tactics. We're just talking about friendship, making healthy choices, and dealing with emotions, and sort of finding healthy ways of coping with emotions when they come up, as opposed to turning to any illegal substances. And I've really been able to see some aha moments for students. Oftentimes, if we're talking about friendship and kind of who influences them, and then when I ask them at the end, maybe what kind of friend they are to themselves, I've seen so many students kind of take a step back and say, you know what, I'm not a really good friend to myself. And then it's amazing to see them kind of recognize that and be vulnerable and want to be open and talk about it. And it's been a really wonderful opportunity for me, and like I said, a part of the job that I truly enjoy. Do you want to go to the next slide? So that's the major message of the program. And then we also offer, did you want to talk about this one?
Let me go back to that a little bit. So she's not mentioned in this part, and I'd like just to acknowledge that Ms. Lisa's been in the, working with youth and families for years and years prior to her arrival here to the Lakewood Choice. And in my position, being an individual long-term recovery, and having had relationship with the families and youth of Lakewood many years ago, and seeing what the lack of those things that she talked about a minute ago means to those kids and families CNN, and instead of transitioning from Taiyi, Taiyi Park to Lockburn, being underway to JRA and ended up in Walla Walla or Shelton, and young ladies ending up pregnant and what have you. Real-life stories. So this kind of work makes a difference, especially one involves the parents. As you can tell, this particular this particular evidence-based program provides the parents with some tools, because it has some components. And if you see right there, it's for three different age groups, and the targets are pretty similar, right? Decreased risk factors and increased protective factors, and there are short and long-term outcomes, all right? Whichever those are, parents feel more equipped in confident of what they need to do with their kids early on in regards to support, information, and skills. So.
So and then, so the incredible years are for parents with younger children. We also offer Guiding with Choices in the community, which is parents of middle school age. As we know, that can be the time when they start to really face some negative peer pressure, and so these support groups are offered for five weeks, and during week four, the youth are invited to be there with the families to to talk about resisting negative peer pressure and the importance of that. So we really try to, besides just giving some tips on parenting through that age, try to create a support group for the parents when they show up here, and for the kids as well. Sure. So the bottom picture is, we also do a prevention club at Clover Park High School. We've had the opportunity to partner with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department with this. They've worked on different projects with us. This last school year, they created a marijuana prevention toolkit for the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, and they were given gift cards for their participation. That was through the health department. So that was a fun activity. We've done other activities where we've gone out in the community, and that's been a wonderful partnership for us as well. And so that's that picture down below. That's us working on Red Ribbon Week, which is an activity where we ask youth to take a pledge to stay drug and alcohol free, and we do that during lunch at Lockburn and at Clover Park High School, and that's also been amazing, the stories that youth come up with, and that they will often thank us for the work that we're doing. And so that's really exciting, because we reach a lot of youth that aren't part of our programs just during that lunchtime activity. And then do you want me to talk about that? And then we're excited because we, this past year, we piloted a mentorship program where we had high school students, seniors from Clover Park High School that went to Taiyi Elementary and were there to assist teachers and mentor the elementary school students, and it was a great success. We got to meet with both high school principals and with the high school students afterwards, and they really learned a lot from it and were excited to see this program continue. It's because it was in pilot form, we're sort of kind of working on what that's going to look like for next year, but we are planning to add that again, where youth will start in January. They'll have a little bit longer time to work with elementary school students. And this year, we're looking at at least training them on prevention work, so they have some language around that when they're working with elementary school students. So we're excited to continue with that. And that's through the Clover Park School District. We're partnering with the Diversity and Equity Coordinators at the school district for that.
And as I mentioned, the public campaign is not so much that we take on the responsibility or create something. No, no need to reinvent the wheel. In partnership with the Department of Health, that's what we do, right? Through this plan, activity choice promotes a campaign to decrease risk factors associated with fibero attitudes. Basically, as communities is really shifting, shifting now, right? And especially in this climate. One thing is promoting addiction treatment, mental health awareness, and so what have you, decriminalizing addiction. And the other thing is really working on prevention alongside with community members in other sectors. So on a nutshell, this is what our action plan goals look like, and they're not going to change. We haven't mentioned that we're going into new state fiscal year and new biennium, but we will keep the same goals. And we, if anything, we're not taking anything away. We will add more programs. And bottom line is, goal number one is reduce law neighborhood attachment in communities organization. Goal number two, decrease, decrease family management problems. Goal number three, reduce favorable attitudes toward the problem behavior. Number four, decrease favorable parental attitudes and involvement in the problem behavior. And number five, decrease community laws and norms favorable towards drug use, firearms, and crime. So, yeah, this work cannot be done just by Ms. Lisa and myself. It takes a village, and it really does. That's what the need to have in all those sectors represented, membership and leadership. It is so key. So I think.
Yeah, so we meet the fourth Wednesday of every month, and we're always looking for members to join us, and then our leadership team meets the second Wednesday of every month.
I do need to mention that this particular goal is, they're not just made up by Marcos and Lisa. This is a result of the Healthy Youth Survey, a community survey, and a coalition assessment tool that we use every year. So whatever data and whatever things that we find of urgency to be addressed, this is a result, and that's how it comes about.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll go back to that last slide if you would, and then I think we'll have some questions. If you go back to the last slide. I'm going to ask a question, and I'll open up the panel. Goal five, the decrease community laws and norms favorable toward drug use, firearms, and crimes. So what has been your perspective with sort of boots-on-the-ground approach toward what we have with existing state law? It has effectively decriminalized drug use and possession. How has that impacted your work?
We need to communicate what needs to be communicated to our youth rather than thinking what the message is through other sources. It can be really how can I say? Diluted, right? And it's not, that's a means that it's going to give them freedom to do what they will by taking certain substances and using, for instance, vaping is becoming a big issue.
Yeah, and I mean, we focus on youth, right? And so we are careful to make sure that we're communicating that it's damaging to their brains because they're still developing, right? But certainly understand that we have youth that are attending our groups whose parents may be making that choice, right? And that that's the choice that they've made with full brain development. So try to be really respectful of that and careful when we have that conversation, knowing what might be going on at home.
One thing, Mayor, that you mentioned about what is our position, what is it we do, and we really need to stick to our mission. And not just, these are Marcos, but our leadership in the statewide.
Sure.
They making it clear that we will not take position on that message, this message. But really, if anything, because prevention and recovery are customs. So to say that that is a good thing, decriminalizing, it will not help this cause. But more promoting the, you know, awareness in need of treatment and prevention, it's more helpful. But this is a tricky question, really.
It's tricky because we all need help with advocacy with our state and federal legislative agendas. So to the extent you can be of help with that, that would be great. Mr. Anderson? So do you have, have you targeted specific laws that you feel are favorable toward drug use which need to be changed?
It could be, I mean, one thing is not, we're not doing it right at this moment here in Lakewood. But make sure that our stores do follow protocol when it comes down to selling or distributing liquor or cigarettes, for instance, that kind of thing. And what does it look like for a family to distribute and provide to minors substances as well? So.
And there's a, there's a line of demarcation with respect to certain substances that is 18 or 21 years old. But what about substances that are now technically illegal but have been effectively decriminalized by the legislature? Do you address that?
In terms of advocating for laws? Is that what you're asking? We have not. I mean, that is an opportunity for our after-school club, Prevention Club. That is something that they could research, if that's something that we were wanting to task them with. But that's not something that we've done in the past. We have had projects with the health department where we've had them go out and survey the stores and see if they feel like they're being marketed to as youth by stores that are selling, you know.
But nobody's marketing fentanyl. Nobody's marketing meth.
But going back.
Except for illegal traffickers. So the question really is, are you taking any position with, of advocacy with respect to the liberalization of state laws which make it virtually impossible to enforce laws against drug use?
So it's like everything, right? Because we do partake on what is the state's summit, right, prevention? And sometimes we take it to a higher level and go to international conferences, if you will, right? And it's not so much for Lisa and I, but it's for the youth themselves and community members to get exposure to what it's like to be with lawmakers, law enforcement, professionals in the field, and healthcare and educators to have those discussions, because you're right. I mean, I mentioned vaping, and when I mentioned vaping, I'm not talking about nicotine. I'm not talking about cannabis. Vaping can go as far as taking opioids and meth, and then all kinds of things can go into it. And we find in that, I'll include in fentanyl. So it's huge when we provide the education and the information to youth and let them have the discussion themselves with empowering it with information, all right? Because once again, I mentioned vaping, and immediately I thought it's like, oh, it's just nicotine juice. No, it's more than that. All the substances included that one that you mentioned can actually go into that. You know, and that way, so, and we have lost some youth due to that.
So how, you mentioned you had groups at high school. You mentioned some. You mentioned some other things that obviously showed you providing some direct support. How many young people in Lakewood do you actually touch directly with services in a year?
So with the support groups that I facilitate at Lockburn Middle School, I typically see about 80 students per school year. And then at the Prevention After School Club, it's five to 10 in the after-school club with the high school. But when we do our lunchtime activities, we're there for all three lunches. So we're reaching out to the entire student body that approaches the table and wants to have a conversation about the work that we're doing.
And you mentioned data. How do you measure success?
We do, so with the curriculum-based support groups, we have a pre and post survey that we're required to have from the healthcare authority because that's where our funds are coming from. So we ask them at the beginning sort of what their views are around drugs or alcohol, and then ask them at the end. And that's the main source of data that we use for the curriculum-based support groups.
And what are your top three funding sources?
Like we say, we just have one funding source. Is that through the healthcare authority, the community prevention one initiative, that's it. It's just one.
Just one.
And but we, I guess we should mention that we do have the one. There's also a position there, a student assistant professional, and they work in the Clover Park School District. They do prevention and intervention in the schools. And their 20% of their salary comes from the Clover Park School District. And in order for us to exist, there has to be a person in their position to exist as well because we work together with that person.
Thank you.
Now, mind that, though, this type of work is what Ms. Lisa's doing is universal. All this, anybody from the student body can attend. That particular position for the prevention intervention work for this individual, for this person is more selective because those are students that are already facing some other type of levels rather than just wanting to have information.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so thank you both for being here today and addressing a topic that is of import to all of us here and to many in the community about how are youths affecting their own futures to be able to go and do that? Regarding the action plan goals slide, I'm saying is, is this a slide that you were provided by the healthcare authority? Or is this something that was developed locally for Lakewood?
The membership coalition here, Lakewood. Yeah, this is intent to address community conditions, local conditions. So again, it comes from the surveys and information that we gather in this, this action plan that it's intended to address those conditions.
So the slide says choices, action plan goals. Okay, so is there a document that's an action plan?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I guess I'd appreciate it if you have, maybe sometime you might share it so that we could take a look at it.
We have the, just say fiscal year ending plan. We working on the brand new one. We can share that 2223, we working on the 2324. But we'll make sure you guys get a copy.
And I will just candidly tell you, when I looked at this slide, that I was, I'm kind of confused initially, and maybe I'm still a bit because of the verbs that say reduce, decrease, and then reduce favorable attitudes towards the problem behavior. I really got to twist that around in my head to try to decide what that means. But maybe you could describe what that means to me so that I make sure I've come to the right conclusion.
When we have a generational problem with a family that be involved in community violence, gang violence, drug use, alcoholism, that's what it means, the favorable attitudes. Sometimes the youth's worst enemy is their own family. If that makes sense. So when we work with the families as parents, adults, we make a difference as well. So reducing the favor.
We might put you a little closer to the mic there, Marcos, so we can hear a little bit better.
If I can add the.
Sure, please.
What, okay, what it means is working with, with the family, with the loved ones, with the, you know, because you deal with generation after generation after generation. That be crime, that be, you know, community violence, that be alcoholism, that be drug addiction. So sometimes they're the worst enemy of the youth because their attitudes are favorable to whatever that is. Is this a thing of honor to be using certain substances? Is it a thing of honor to be behaving or acting some type of way?
And I guess that I somewhat understand that sometimes there are people in a young person's life who are, rather than helping steer them in the right direction, are looking to steer them the other way or not doing anything to divert them from behavior that's not, not healthy for them to be able to go and do that. I will just tell you my perception of this, these goals is that they're they're not very enlightening. In other words. It says decrease family problem rather than eliminate them. It says reduce favorable attitudes towards the problem instead of reverse. Okay, and in other words, that you are using verbs that say, these problems are just going to continue to exist. We just want to make them a little bit less impactful instead of removing which these things here are, I think. I mean, they're considerable problems that each of the areas that you have in the home, in the community, in the school, in that, you know, these are things that should be eradicated, not just reduced or decreased to the point of where they still exist, just not so much as before. You know, I think that you and as a community, we ought to take on reversing these things, not just making them a little bit less of a problem to do that. Just to move on to this over here. You spoke about work at some elementary schools and some work at Clover Park High School. So I didn't glean exactly your engagement in the three middle schools that we have here in. Is that, are you just not able to stretch that far? Or how does that work?
I just want to go back to the goals of Lakewood, our Lakewood Choice Goals. So what we go through strategic planning every couple of years, and we will be doing that again in 2024. And that's something that community can be involved in. And we use the Healthy Youth Survey data and the Community Survey to look at that. And then once we look at what the issues are facing our community, then we pick from goals that are from the healthcare authority. So that's the healthcare authority language. I just kind of want to put that out there. It's not our language in the goals. We have to use those. And when you see our action plan, you'll see the action plan, and then it lists the services that we have to meet those goals. So I wanted to answer that. But I do work at Lockburn Middle School. That's primarily where I run my support groups and Clover Park High School. Those have been identified as schools that could use a little extra support. And so that's where the healthcare authority has us placed, along with the student assistance professional that we mentioned. We, there could be the opportunity to move out to other schools. Like we said, we have trained somebody else to do curriculum-based support groups through the Boys and Girls Club, and we're hoping to have them at Taiyi Elementary School. So it's a matter of getting other community members that are interested and involved and maybe want to go to those trainings. And we have the funds to send them to those trainings, and then they can help spread out the work more in the community.
Okay, and let me say that, just go back to the goals for a minute. I don't think that the goals are categorized towards things that are real and truly problematic in a young person's life. But I think that the goals, the way that they're worded, are very low bars. In other words, just, you know, reduce and decrease, they just don't. I mean, I, you can do that, I think awfully, or you can rationalize that you have done that awfully easily without really moving a needle very far and still having the needle all the way over to the negative side.
Sure.
So I can go on, but I guess come back to my question about, I see elementary schools and high school, but are, are you with your funding able to not stretch to be significantly active in middle, with middle school youth? Or is that, did I just not glean that correctly from the presentation?
I work in Lockburn Middle School. That's where I run the support group. So there, we have a large presence at Lockburn Middle School. I've been there since 2016 facilitating those support groups. And we work with communities and schools and Greater Lakes Mental Health to reach the youth for those support groups.
Okay, and you referred to that you are looking to use evidence-based strategies that, is there like a list of evidence-based strategies that is provided by the healthcare authority that you can choose from?
Correct.
To try to implement it as they fit the situation here to be able to go and do that? And has that been updated since 2017?
They just went through a major update.
Spring, summer?
Yeah.
Spring.
Yeah.
That might be interesting to get.
Well, again, I guess that I would tell you that I think you are making an impact on young people that you interact with because I have heard that from, from parents and from folks in the community that value your work and how you bring, not just yourselves, but you bring others from the Health Department and that to bear on what are, what are, what are real problems. That, and I guess that, and I guess we are in a situation where the city is serving as a, like a fiscal agent to pass through the healthcare authority's funds to, to fund your work. Is that still the case that I remember from a number of years ago?
Yes, the healthcare authority funds us, and then part of those funds go to the city of Lakewood, who is our fiscal manager, correct?
Okay, and so you've been at this a number of years. Have your funds been going up annually? If you could count for inflation and such?
A little bit, yeah. A little bit, yeah, yeah. Yeah, as community work gets really evolved and changed since 2013, the type of work that we've done. And obviously, going through COVID, we retreated quite a bit, and we're doing everything virtually, even our support groups. And we feel like we're just now really getting back out into the community and able to do the work that we were doing before COVID.
Well, as, you know, as Councilmember Anderson alluded, that legislative bodies, including this one, but also at the state and county and federal level, are the ones where that deal with laws and things that are in this area that you're affected with. So I really wish you would take him seriously about if you have recommendations about adjustments or tweaks to laws that you think are not working to, or that work against your effort to, to help do to do that. You know, please do share them with us so that we can advocate for them on behalf of the community and the young, particularly the young people in this community.
Yeah, absolutely. We do rely on the healthcare authority. They are the ones that lobby and work on, and then keep us informed on the laws and what things are changing and what we need to be aware of. And that certainly is a question we could bring to them and then share that back with you.
And I would just, and I would just tell you that I think that the healthcare authority at the state doesn't always align with what the community thinks are, that are needed in terms of laws. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Laura Sella and then Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming in and for all you do in our community. Just a quick question. A significant, significant portion of our student body speaks English as a second language. Do you take a multilingual approach to help kind of meet them and connect with them to understand their needs?
At present, we do make sure to at least facilitate Spanish as an option for the families and the students is there, is in place. But you are correct, that goes beyond Spanish. The need is more. I don't know if you want to speak.
Yeah, I mean, all of our parenting programs are offered in English and in Spanish. We make sure to hire facilitators that, for both. And then all of our resources as well at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening and thank you for coming. I heard your presentation at Lakewood Promise, and I thought it was something that we, this body would be interested in hearing more about. Anything we can do to help our youth is what we are all about. So appreciate the things that you're doing and keep us informed and we'll do what we can to support.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you again for coming. It was obviously a robust discussion. There's interest in serving our youth. So thank you for the work you're doing and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah, very good. Well, and speaking of youth, we have our Clover Park School District report. And tonight we have Board Member Alyssa Anderson Pearson.
All right, good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. Thank you for having me tonight. So as Mayor Wayland said earlier, we did have a devastating fire at the Jamestown Mobile Estates in Woodbrook, and it did impact 28 of our students at four different schools. So it was a huge impact. And we are doing what we can to support them. So all the students have been identified by grade level and what schools that they attend. We're having all administrators reach out to their respective students to determine their needs, clothing and other resources. And we do work with Caring for Kids and their supporting as well. Each student that was displaced will automatically qualify for McKinney-Vento, which is our program for those, for our students who are experiencing homelessness. So just to give an example, you have like a homeschool. You get to choose the school that you go to. So maybe you get moved to Seattle, but you know, you are experiencing homelessness. You get transportation back to the Clover Park School District if that's the school district that you want as your home base. It just helps students have a more stable environment. And, you know, if they're moving around a lot, you obviously don't want them to move schools that many times. That would be disruptive. And so, and school administrators, counselors, and teachers will work with their respective families to determine any mental health services needed for students to support this traumatic event. So those services include Greater Lakes Mental Health, Hazle Health. So that's both physical. Uh, for students to, to support this traumatic event. So those services include Greater Lakes Mental Health, Hazel Health. So that's both physical and. Mental health services and we will, we stand ready. Um, if we can support in other ways as well, but we are doing what we can. But yes, it was very devastating. Um, there is, you know, some positive news, although it's hard to follow after something so dramatic, but. Um, our summer school session completed July twenty-first, so more than twenty-five hundred students participated in our summer school program. That ran through July twenty-four, July twenty-first at four elementary schools, Thomas Middle School and Lakes and Clover Park High Schools. So what's interesting is, you know, probably when you're in school as well, but when I was in school, summer school tended to be for students who. You know, maybe were behind and they were trying to catch up and, you know, it kind of had a negative connotation to it. It's really not what the summer, summer school is now, of course, for the students who need the extra support, but. Um, just to give some ideas at some of the programs that students, uh, get to join in. Um, at the elementary school level, early literacy, mathematics, enrichment for K twelve, K through two students to help build confidence. For the start of the next school year, project-based learning with an emphasis on science and social studies and science-based STEM courses for grades one through five. At the middle school level, um, project-based learning with emphasis on science, social studies and science-based STEM courses. Um, additionally, getting ready for middle school algebra is offered for students who are trying to build their mathematical skillset. For upcoming algebra. And at the high school level, uh, we provide independent study through Grad Alliance online programs, which allows students to earn credits at their own pace. Any core class they had previously taken, um, they're, they're available to students as well. And additionally, students are engaging in enrichment courses that include leadership, arts and fitness classes. So we're trying to expand it. I, you know, I see the students standing out there, uh, for the bus. So I, you know, I, I'm just happy that it's more of a. Getting ready for the next school year in addition to helping maybe the high schoolers or, or other, um, grades get. Catch up, I guess. And then, uh, full day kindergarten will be offered in all elementary schools. So in all sixteen elementary schools, um. Let's, the first day of school is August thirtieth. However, kindergarten students won't start till Tuesday, September fifth. So we always do that. We. They start a few, few days later than the rest of, rest of the students. Um. Clover Park School District is to provide free meals for all students this year. This has been a big topic, uh, for. Probably ever. But we have a high percentage of students who receive free and reduced meal, uh, reduced price meals and food insecurity is a serious issue. Facing many of our community's children. The district has recently received approval from the state to provide meals, breakfast and lunch to all district students. Regardless of their family's income status and CPSD's efforts are helping removing barriers affecting students. So. Oh, that will be great for this next year. Um, and then we have the Caring for Kids Ready to Learn Fair, August. Friday, oh, sorry, it's, I made Friday up, just August twelfth, not exactly sure what day of the week that is. And, oh, just kidding, it was my last Saturday, Saturday, August twelfth, nine AM to noon at Harrison Prep. And I've attended this event in the past. It's, you know, there's school supplies, galore, backpacks, um. Clothes. I, I mean, I'm not sure if that's every year, but last time that I went there, there's clothes. So we're very appreciative of our partnership with Caring for Kids. Um, so, and they also hold two events in the community, one August fifteenth at Spring Brook Park from three to six PM. And on August seventeenth at Tillicum Community Center from five to six thirty. So if there's families out there looking for some support for the school year. Caring for Kids is a great, uh. Community organization. And let's see, I also just wanted to say Summer Fest. Um, I know Clover Park had a, had a great time at Summer Fest. Uh, Councilmember Boki, I didn't see your wife. She, oh, she didn't face paint my children's faces. She had volunteers there helping. So honestly, I thought I was one of the, just. Well, it's just a fun event in general. It was very hot, but it was, you know, better than rain. So it was great. I mean, um, you know, I'm biased to the. Clover Park booth, but they had some face paint and books for students and it, it was just a really fun time and. You know, the cars are always fun. So we're always appreciative of the partnership that we have there, just being able to, uh, join in and all. All the city events. So that's all I have tonight. But if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions? I had one quick one, just on the, the free breakfast and lunch for all students, which sounds like a. Positive thing. Is there a budgetary impact to the district or do you receive grant money as commensurate with the increase in the expense?
I think this was like just announced. We haven't even talked about it at a school board meeting. I did, uh, hear about it, but, um, I think it's. It's provided by the state from what I have heard. I did hear some grade levels. I'm not sure if we're adding some additional funding on top of that, but I'm sure. We'll find out, um, soon. But you know, a lot of our students did already, um, qualify for free and reduced lunch. So it's just great that we kind of can. Even it out for everybody.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yep. Okay, and included within presentations tonight, uh, that kind of my election. Was to bring up our, our chief, Jim Sharp, to give us an overview. On the Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park fire. So Chief Sharp, the floor is yours. Followed, I believe, by Mr. Coffield, if it's the city manager's election to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, um, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council. I appreciate you having me here this evening, uh, following such tragic event. I'm sure that, uh, that, uh, you likely have a lot of questions and, and very likely feeling a lot of questions as to what happened. And so. I was hoping that I could just be here today to share a, a brief overview of what actions the fire department, uh, undertook to try and. Mitigate this fire and, and just kind of give you some background of how, how it progressed through the different stages and, and how we got to the. Uh, the end of the, the fire and, and it got it out, but then some of the losses that we sustained. Before I start, I just wanted to give, uh, those of you who may or may not be, uh, a hundred percent familiar with where we are and, and where this incident actually took place. I think there's a, a few key landmarks that are, are worth noting. And so I've got this map up here and, uh. See if I can get the pointer working here. So, so what you've got here is you've got, uh, this would be Spring Street here. With a hundred and forty-sixth running here, a hundred and fiftieth running parallel down here with Woodbrook Drive out here. The area we're going to be discussing is right here, this vacant piece of land right here is where the burn started. Uh, to the left, you have an apartment complex and to the right, you have the mobile home complex. Uh, as, as I'm facing it, I believe you guys are all facing the same way. So, um. Essentially, this would be directionally, uh, west of the fire and this would be east, the, the mobile home park would be east. So. I'll just walk through, uh, our actions that day and, and, uh, what we did and, and then, um, I think, uh. The city manager might have some follow-up on some actions that have taken place since Friday to help the, the community members out there and then happy to also answer any questions you may have. Of, uh, related to the fire department actions. So at approximately two oh nine last Friday, Engine twenty-three was dispatched to a small grass fire in the area of one hundred and forty-sixth Street. And Murray Road Southwest. At that time, Engine twenty-three, which is our Tillicum engine, had just cleared an auto accident and was resupplying at Station twenty-one on Silicon Boulevard. Uh, because they were out on Silicon Boulevard, they requested a second engine to accompany them to, uh, to the fire, uh, because they felt they could get there faster. Engine twenty was dispatched from their station on Pacific Highway. And based on the hot windy conditions of the day, the battalion chief at Station twenty added himself to the call and requested Firecom to add a squad. And a medic unit to the call. At approximately two eighteen, Battalion twenty arrived on the scene to find a fifty by one hundred fast-moving brush fire threatening several structures. At the time, winds were approximately eight miles an hour out of the northwest. The fire was located at seventy-two ten one hundred and forty-sixth Street Southwest, which is approximately five acres of undeveloped land. Ordered on the west by the Brookridge Apartments and on the east by the Jamestown Mobile Home Park. On arrival, Battalion twenty was seeing flames with twenty-foot lengths and the fire was creating an imminent threat to the Brookridge Apartments on the west side of the fire. He immediately requested an additional battalion chief and an engine company to respond. Based on what they had heard on the radio, Ladder two nineteen also added themselves to the alarm. The first arriving engine company was directed to set up on one hundred and forty-sixth Street along with a squad for fire control and exposure protection. Primarily initially at the Brookridge Apartments. Medic twenty was sent to the Jamestown Mobile Home Park to recon the, the east side of the fire. The fire continued to grow rapidly during this time. The second arriving engine company was initially directed to the south flank of the fire, as that was the direction the fire was starting to travel. But the winds shifted dramatically towards the east, so they were redirected to the Jamestown Mobile Home Park for fire control and exposure protection. Firefighters began evacuating mobile homes while also working to slow the fire. After approximately five minutes on scene, the battalion chief requested an upgrade to a first alarm residential fire response. This added another engine, one medic unit, one battalion chief, one incident safety officer and a deputy chief, I mean, a duty chief. Additional arriving units were directed to the Jamestown Mobile Home Park. It was around this time that Engine twenty reported one mobile home was on fire. And it was extending to a second with arcing power lines that had come down and were on the ground. Approximately eleven minutes after the first alarm was called, the battalion chief requested a second alarm. The second alarm consisted of the remaining companies in West Pierce as well as companies from JBLM and Central Pierce. In total, more than sixty firefighters were involved in bringing the fire under control with support from JBLM, Central Pierce and Tacoma Fire. The fire was called under control approximately two and a half hours after the initial dispatch. Unfortunately, nine mobile homes were a total loss, five were severely damaged, six cars and two AVs were a total loss and two people lost their lives in one of the mobile homes. At this time, the fire is under investigation by our investigators at West Pierce along with the Lakewood Police Department. And West Pierce Cares, our employee nonprofit, is working with the city to assist those displaced families in any way they can.
Well, thank you, Chief, very much. I went out there today myself, uh, to look at the site and. It is, uh, certainly. Tragic for sure. I mean, the devastation caused in a short period of time is immense. Any questions of Chief Sharp before we turn it over to Mr. Coffield? Well, again, thank you and your teams for the valiant work that they did. Uh, it's never easy, I assume. Mr. Coffield, do you have some thoughts or updates for us?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, first of all, on behalf of the city, you know, I too like to extend our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of. The two men who tragically lost their lives on, on Friday. It was certainly definitely a tragic event for this, for this community. I also want to thank Chief Sharp, the Fire District, all of our Lakewood Police Officers. Coupled with a number of neighboring agencies to include Red Cross, Pierce Transit, Rock USA. And others for their quick action and dedication in responding to this incident that unfortunately resulted in a loss of life. Um, in addition, our police chief or assistant police chief, our police PIO, all responded to the scene in support of this. A detective and investigator also responded to work with the Fire District's fire investigator to ultimately hopefully determine the cause of this. And as the Fire District was, was, um, fighting this fire, uh, the Red Cross responded and set up an evacuation center on Friday afternoon. At the Tillicum American Lake Gardens Community Center. The Red Cross also helped with some financial assistance to help those families that were in need and had been displaced by the fire to help them through the weekend into the early part. Of this week. We also want to thank and recognize Pierce Transit who responded with a transit coach to help with some transportation within. That area again for the folks who were displaced. We do understand that all the displaced residents were able to temporarily find housing either with family or friends. So that's where the situation is right now. Of course, the impact of the fire was quite devastating in that a total of nine trailers were completely destroyed, along with another five that were damaged. That also included six vehicles and two ATVs that were, that were destroyed. In total, twenty-three people have been displaced, fourteen adults, nine children, as well as some pets, one dog and seven cats. And we understand some other pets are. Missing as, 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 as well. We understand as of this morning, not all of the units had power restored, though the majority had. However, Rock USA is in the, is in the process of trying to bring in a temporary generator for the remaining units. For background purposes, the residents of Jamestown Mobile Home Park acquired ownership of this, of their park about a year ago. And formed a cooperative ownership and partnership with Rock USA. And you might remember them from your previous regular meeting on July seventeenth. When they came in along with representatives of their neighbor, Woodbrook Wagon Homeowners Cooperative. Talking about all the good things that they had down in there and also mentioned the Jamestown Mobile Home Park facility. You know, we immediately began communicating with Rock USA, uh, since again, the Jamestown Mobile Home Park. Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park is a member. They have an emergency support situat- for situat- group for situations like this and it's been activated. To help provide assistance to their membership. Also, their insurance carrier showed up today. And arrived to get an understanding of the situation. Um, they wanted to move forward with some demolition permits to address the destroyed trailers. However, we asked them to put a pause on that. Since the investigation had not been yet completed and so they are doing that. Um, it is likely too that the insurance carrier might want to do their own investigation, which is common in, in, in situations, in situations like this. Um, earlier this afternoon, the city, um, representatives met with Rock USA, the State Department of Commerce and the Red Cl- and the Red Cross. And it was clear that the city is in a very well, strong position to be able to provide some financial assistance to the displaced residents above and beyond what other community partners. Are doing. We're in the process of assessing available funds, but certainly we have some CDBG, some abatement and some fourteen oh six funds that. That are available. We will be providing some relocation assistance, the amounts to be determined, but for example, it could be between four and. Eight thousand dollars per family, depending upon the size and the need. And that would also include their ability to pay their first and last month's rent. As well as security deposits and utilities and things, and things along those lines. There's also the issue of cleanup and of course, you know, perhaps their insurance carrier will, will address that. The city is also looking at. Considering an emergency abatement process where the city would actually take that on and get that done sooner and a quicker manner without any cost to them. Probably more to follow on that in the near, in the, in the near future. Beginning this morning, city representatives made personal contact with all but one of the households. And actually, that last household could have occurred between. Um, late afternoon and, 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 and this evening. Right now, our focus is to get them some financial assistance to get them back up on their feet. As soon as possible. And, um, we do, um, we are also working with Rock USA to help them with just. Personal papers and stuff like that, because it is likely they lost everything in their fires. But again, the city is, um, working with some partners to get that done. So we are also in the process of reaching out to LASSA to see if they can serve as a housing navigator, which is something they're very, very good at. To help these displaced folks find a place to live in some new homes. In addition, LASSA can then also help them with referrals to other resources. Whether that's a furniture bank or food resources and things along, along those lines. Um, as you heard, um, from, uh, the, the, the school district board president Pearson, uh, we've also been in contact with, um. The Clover Park School District, since they want to get an understanding of, of, of the impact of the children down there. And, um, I can tell you that Superintendent Ron Banner. Has communicated that the school district is standing by and is ready to move forward and support both the families and their children. And of course, the. Um, uh, President Pearson just gave a nice update on, on what that entails. So in closing, I'd just like to say that a number of community partners are working together to do all that we can to help these families. The city's priority right now, of course, is to get some financial assistance to these folks. So again, they can begin to move forward. You know, to address this devastating situation. Um, I'd also like to point out that the meetings that we had this morning with those parties, those are going to continue. Um, at least for the foreseeable future until we can, and so we can get through this. And again, I just want to thank everybody who has come together. Um, in support of, of, of the Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park. So with that, if you have any questions, I can try and answer them there.
Certainly. Very good. Thank you for the overview. Councilmember Anderson.
Comment or editorial comment for, uh, thought, not obviously we don't take action tonight, but to be thinking about. We routinely, in my day job, even more routinely, see, uh, government permanent supporting housing. Initiatives which while with land cost more than a half million dollars per unit and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Per unit to support. per unit to support indefinitely. Here we have a situation where we had what's considered naturally occurring, no, naturally occurring affordable housing. Some people who take the initiative to buy the land, so there's no need to buy land. Uh, and for about a hundred thousand dollars all in, you can get a thousand square foot, small three-bedroom manufactured home. We, the government writ large, whether it's state, county, city, if it could do government right, would jump at the chance to give low-income people self-sustaining affordable housing at a hundred thousand dollars a unit. And so I think we should explore a way cooperatively with others to see if we could contribute to a solution which helps people be self-sufficient, they're innocent victims of a tragedy. And does what the government's trying to do for a half million dollars plus twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a one-one-off expense of about a hundred thousand dollars a unit. Uh, it makes too much sense for government to be able to do it quickly and efficiently, but maybe we can be innovative enough and create some sort of coalition that that could do this and set an example because you could actually take this further because I I had the mis- I guess educationally good fortune. Years ago, I was a volunteer firefighter. I've actually been inside two fully engulfed single-wide mobile homes. And when I got done, I vowed that if I were to sleep in one of the non-code older ones, I'd sleep outside because they aren't safe. So if we could set an example, this would be a way to, as a proof of concept, instead of spending a half million dollars a unit, replace low-income housing with manufactured housing where low-income people could have self-sufficiency instead of this perpetual government payment and with a great bureaucracy uh, to oversee it. The bureaucracy costs more than the than the units that they uh, they provide. So uh, I'm a great skeptic when it comes to affordable housing programs. Maybe this is a chance to in in an unusual situation to to build a coalition that could do something that not only would help these people, but would set an example.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor Whalen. I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Anderson, um. Mr. City Manager, just a question. You talk about the insurance company and it gets mentioned in your, excuse me. Talk about the insurance company, but in some of the stuff that you sent us today or the la- over the last couple of days, thank you very much, it mentions that they don't have insurance. Uh, I I are you are you speaking about the specifically the homes in that case or is that am I just reading that wrong?
Yeah, actually, Councilmember Bokey, we, at this point in time, we don't fully know um, what the carrier covers or doesn't cover. Rock USA is still working, working through that. What we know from experience is typically mobile homes are very difficult to insure. However, this is part of a cooperative. And so we're hoping that perhaps as part of Rock USA, that there was some kind of umbrella or even individual insurance coverage on the individual um, mobile homes. But at this point in time, we 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 just don't know that.
Do were there issues that that we were? The land next door is not owned by the Mobile Home Park, is it?
Um, that's correct. It's it's not. It is under contract with um, a a developer, I believe it's Ben Arroyo. And the owner, she's working with them to develop that. It's actually going through the planning slash permitting process.
Okay, so there were no, there's n- no development, there was no activity on this that was allowed, right? Clearly someone started this fire, right? Is that what we know?
Well, we don't, we don't know that yet. There's a lot of speculation out there. Um, there wasn't any lightning or who who, yeah, in summary, we we just don't know, Councilmember Bokey, and um, we'll let the West Pierce Fire and Rescue District and their investigators determine what the cause of the fire was.
Thank you.
Councilmember Randstadter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, I I I agree with Councilmember Anderson that this is a uh, an opportunity of one. This is one of two mobile home cooperatives that we have in the city. And that um, as such, they are a uh, by their very nature, initiatives that are designed to preserve affordable housing, which is one of the goals that we are trying to make, uh, want to make and are being asked to make to go going forward to do that. And Councilmember Anderson's math is 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 right on in terms of the number of units to be able to go and do that. And um, I don't know if the cooperative qualifies as a nonprofit that might be eligible for some assistance for us to be able to look to go to do that or for us to make a a low-interest loan through the home program or something like that that would help get these folks reestablished on the site where they were in the community that they were being able to go and do that. I also noted in the city manager's comments to us, he noted that there is maybe some nuances about the fact that this site, that that the mo- the mobile homes on that site are are a non-conforming use. And that this may be something that as we are right in the range of why we're trying to look at the comprehensive plan and land use changes for next year. We may want to look at uh, both of the cooperatives, which are somewhat different and tend to have a much better likelihood of being maintained and being able to go and do that than a lot of traditional home mobile home sites, manufactured home sites, that we may want to look at uh, making them conforming either in the existing zoning of the commercial or of maybe looking at the sets of parcels that make up those cooperatives of looking to transition them to a different zoning to where non-conforming because I think we're by assisting these cooperatives in joining, we're essentially committing to saying this is a place that we want to have long-term um, affordable housing to rather than commercial development. And we should probably look at how our options are to make that look like in the code instead of just having them continue to be non-conforming and then having to do workarounds to help them. Um, I think we could go to do that. So I think there are some uh, some opportunities. The other thing is, and I appreciate the the certainly the 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 extensive efforts on the have matter of worst of first responders that that look to help people. Uh, I was somewhat encouraged by the city manager's uh, comment that uh, well, he phrased it as a problem that so many people and organizations wanted to help. That 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 it became a management problem, but as a as 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 looking at it from a community perspective, I see that as a as a good thing, and if if there's just work to sort that out, uh, you know, I I think we should be be glad glad to do that because we certainly wouldn't want the opposite uh, to to go 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 forward and 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 do that. So um, I I think uh, you know, this is uh, this this is an opportunity to um, to prove that we're a community that cares about people and particularly in in all of our neighborhoods to include the lower-income ones.
Any other comments of the city manager? Well, as I indicated, I had the opportunity to go out there today and met with a few of the the homeowners, and so it was uh, certainly apparent to me that while there was indeed tragedy, there was also hope. They were having a meeting together as an association to discuss, you know, future plans and certainly one of the things we can do to help them out is to expedite the removal of the debris. If that's something we can do on the demolition piece and alleviate that burden, that cost burden for them. You know, there there was, as I was driving out there with Sergeant Porcher, there was another structure on the other side of the road, on the west side of the road, that appears to have suffered a fire loss at some period of time, probably in the last six months or so, and it's tagged, so it must be in the abatement process already. That may be one uh, that we may want to expedite whatever we can do on that as well because the more structures that are out there that are welcoming to knucklehead behavior, uh, the higher the risk for knucklehead behavior to do something tragic. And I'm not saying that that's what happened here. We don't know until the investigation is done, but the more we can do to clean up the area to preserve the housing for the folks who live there, the better. Okay, well, thank you for that. Appreciate the update. Thank you, Chief, for the update. Very appreciative, appreciative. And uh, I'm sure more to follow. So thanks again. Okay, at this time, we'll now move to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Our friends appearing by Zoom tonight certainly have the chance to address the council during the public comment period. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Miss Schumacher at the six thousand Main Street Southwest Lakewood, Washington address, or by email at B Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. But for the record, we'd like to have the clerk read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Whalen, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Thank you. So as I read off those who have signed in to address the council during the public commentary here in person, uh, please note that your comments uh, should pertain to matters pertaining to city business. And you have three minutes per person to address the council. We ask that you state your name and your residence of record, Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington. Following that, we'll allow virtual comments through the Zoom process. You can certainly join the meeting if you haven't already by dialing the telephone number two five three two one five eight seven eight two and enter the meeting ID number that normally is on the screen here. But it's eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three and then use the raise the hand button uh, so we can recognize and call on you. So those who have signed in first, we have Tamara Cook. I saw him as Cook somewhere. Uh, she may have an opportunity to come back. The next is Abraham Virginian. I can't read your handwriting, sir. And again, uh, while you're welcome to provide public public comment uh, in a meeting that I didn't attend and the one meeting I did attend, um, please recognize that the city is represented by our legal counsel and I understand you are as well. So if you have a generic comment, great. If you have a comment pertaining to your case, really not appropriate for public comment.
You got that effect. Uh, I I am here to speak about uh, inclusion, diversity, equity and access. I believe that affects uh, every member of this community, including us. And uh, that was what it was used in order to condemn our home. So uh, for that reason, Representative Belly, I would like to ask her to see why she commented the way she did. We never got any explanation for that. We don't know what wrong we have done. We don't know why we are so different that some, you know, and 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 I'm here for that. I would appreciate it. I know I understand. Three minutes already almost happened. A minute of it is gone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, we we don't have a back and forth call if we have a comment.
I asked Ms. Representative Belly to explain that, what she meant by what she meant regarding diversity, inclusion and access.
Yeah, it's
On on July, uh, on June twentieth.
This is your chance to provide public comments, sir. We we really don't have a back and forth dialogue.
Well, unless I know what she meant, how can I make a comment on?
Well, perhaps um, she can, well, we really can't because of the legal case. We have representative counsel.
No, it has nothing to do with the legal case. This is this is something that is really a state-wide uh, advertised and uh, we want to know how different me and my family are.
Sir Mayor.
I will let you finish your public comment and we're we're not going to address a back and forth, sir. So if you have a generic public comment, as you indicated you did, you still have time on the clock and I'd ask you, keep it focused to that.
Well, um, when I came to this country, it was nineteen eighty-five. I went to college, I became a dentist. And I worked as hard as I could. I worked full-time, I went to college and I became a dentist. There was a time that I wouldn't sleep for fifty hours from Thursday morning, six o'clock, and I woke woke up till Saturday, eight thirty in the morning. I wouldn't go to bed, I wouldn't go to my bedroom. Does this council think that there should be a difference between me and somebody who doesn't do anything? And just want to be a part of equity? Or this council want to have him a part of it? I would appreciate for your response. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual who has signed up in the audience to address councillor in the public commentary, but you certainly have every opportunity to step up to the podium to address the councillor in the public commentary if you haven't signed in. So uh, if you'd like to do so, please queue up and as I've indicated, state your name and uh, residence of record, and then you'll have your three minutes to speak. Welcome.
Hi. Well, my name is Jasveen Smith and I've been in this community for over fifty years. And um, I came initially to talk about the trees, the Gary Oaks trees. And I know that uh, in the past year, last summer, you've heard me speak on it. And um, you know, I I happen to know at least four of you on this um, council. Uh, in a personal way, I know everyone's educated and we are having global warming. Our world is on fire. It's on fire and you keep cutting down the trees, including in our beautiful jewel as as the um, city puts it, of Fort Silicon Park. You cut down a lot of trees over there. People want to go to the park. They want to romp in the in the trails or see the trees and and we need them for canopy. Our wildlife needs them for um, for their habitat. You know, the cycle of life. And I would just implore you to stop cutting down the trees. When we think about what happened over there in in uh, Woodbrook, look at those those um, what are they called? Storage units? That intensifies the heat. It intensifies the heat. And so it's not a wonder why there was a big fire that was hard to control. The the Gary Oaks that were lining up on uh, Phillips Road, on Phillips Road, we cut those down and the people whose homes um, sit in the side, they no longer have the shade that they may need. They could be elderly people who needed that shade. sit in the side, they no longer have the shade that they may need. They could be elderly people who needed that shade. I did want to talk about, I didn't know that this gentleman would be here. But I hear that, um, you're trying to do in imminent domain and take their home away from them. Why? To build a parking lot. Parking lot and access to the, the lake. I mean, we're, we're talking about people. Where's the human side of Lakewood? Where's the human side of Lakewood? And that's, that's what I've got to say.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Christine. I'm in Eddie Lakewood. Hello, everybody. Um, so yeah, when you were looking at the aerial photos of Woodbrook, I hope you were all feeling really bad because now it's covered with warehouses. And before it was a lot of open space and there were Gary, Gary Oak Grove there. And people could have lived there in affordable housing. And now it's turned into warehouse district that gets really hot. Really hot. Concrete asphalt is really hot. And it's no surprise that it was hot like blazes there. And everything is dry even more than usual. Did you see it was surrounded on both sides? So I hope you felt bad, and I hope you're not going to make any more decisions like that to plaster Lakewood with even more warehouses, because it's going to be one huge heat island. So the time for incremental change is over, and we need to protect the environment a lot more boldly, and the city council has to do more to protect Lakewood's environment. As I understand, uh, even under the new rules, the Gary Oaks are only protected insofar as someone now needs a permit to cut one down. So that's not much protection, is it? And still lots under ten thousand square feet can be clear cut, except for Gary Oaks, just like before. What about big old Douglas firs and a sequoia? Anything at all can be destroyed just because the lot is small? What if somebody subdivides into a lot of little lots? It can just be clear cut? Does this all make sense? It doesn't seem to make sense. Do we really want Lakewood to be clear cut even more like the twenty-eight houses that were squeezed onto former forested land off of Interlochen? It seems that not a tree remains standing there. It's like wall-to-wall houses there. It's a mini heat island. It'll, we're, it's gonna, we're gonna look like Tacoma if it keeps going like this or worse. So, but do you really care? I don't see any sign that any of you really care. Another problem is the amended tree preservation code talks about how it's allowed to remove damaged or diseased trees. But at the same time, it's the decadent trees. That's what they're called, old and decrepit, like some of us, I suppose, that would qualify them as habitat worthy of protection. So they're new heritage trees. This sounds pretty good, doesn't it? But the owner has to nominate his tree and/or agree to the designation, which carries no special protections. The owner can delist it. So what's the point then? Surely there are jurisdictions who do it differently. You can't depend on the owner's personal attitude toward his tree. The so-called tree preservation code is quite clearly still a work in progress. Please try harder. As it is, one can't take Lakewood seriously yet as far as tree protections go. And of course, as always, let me know how I can help you. Thanks.
That was the last individual who has approached the podium to address council during the public comment period. If we've missed anyone in the audience, now is the time. If not, I will go with our city clerk to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk, do we have a few attendees appearing virtually?
First, we have Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen.
Yeah. Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm thinking in the time period from two thousand eighteen to two thou, two thousand twenty-three. And I recall in two thousand eighteen, I was over, coming back from, uh, South Dakota. Still hadn't moved yet and, um, heard this comment on the radio. It caused me to stop at a restaurant because it was so puzzling that a PhD could say something stupid like math is racist. Well, then you look at masks, you look at school test scores and, uh, there is some kind of a cultural thing there, I guess. If you don't know math, it's going to be hard for you to project. Um, when you've got too much or too little of something, and of course, then in that same month or two, two thousand eighteen, uh, all of the elected of state, elected officials, uh, state representatives for the area, they, uh, all voted to make this a sanctuary state. And I remember in my mind, I thought, this is five of the most stupid people I've ever met. I tried to question some. I'm never here because they helped to get a grant or something like that, and they were here to get a pat on the back. I wasn't patting them on the back, but trying to figure out why they'd made that decision. Well, so we move on forward for four or five years, and what do you got? Well, you never thought about where all of these illegal immigrants were going to go. And you never thought about the crimes that they might quit because they go, come across the border without being properly vetted? And it's up into the millions? So where did they go? And, um, well, they went off to a lot of big cities like Seattle and Portland, and, and you see what's happening. Some, some of these sanctuary cities, the mayors are crying. And then some of them are, uh, now pushing them out to the suburbs. So it's no, no surprise to me that Seattle has pushed a lot of its problems towards Lakewood. And I'm looking at this zoning thing. I see you're trying to social engineer. You're going to cut up lots in neighborhoods that already have certain standards of size, age, proximity. You're not going anywhere. Um, in my opinion, your reputation is so bad that, uh, people all over are looking to better states to live in.
Next, uh, Mr. Dunlop.
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. Uh, I wanted to talk about, um, you know, the Edgewater Park, uh, situation. So, um, you know, I understand we have worries about there not being enough parking. This is why you, um, are considering, um, forced buying a house, as far as I understand, to build a parking lot. Um, but I'm just thinking, um, shouldn't you perhaps be um, thinking about ways perhaps to reduce traffic, um, in the area? You know, I do, I do walk around that area quite a lot, a- as I believe the mayor does. And, um, I, you know, I do talk to people. I know one, you know, one complaint, um, that I have heard is that, you know, people bring these huge boats in and they park these things where they like, and this is a major problem because it, uh, can block emergency ser- emergency services and so forth. Um, so you're thinking perhaps, oh, you have a parking lot and that might kind of solve the problem, or you expand the, 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 uh, public docking facilities on in Edgewater Park, which is very small anyway. Um, so as a possibility, wouldn't it, might it not be a good idea? You know, and I'm also thinking in terms of equity. Um, I do completely understand the equity issue. Um, would it not be a good idea to actually restrict, um, the kind of craft that are allowed to use city, the, the park, um, to, um, as for docking? Obviously, this has nothing to do with, um, private, private, you know, property owners who have property, um, you know, butting the lake. Um, but wouldn't you, wouldn't it be a good idea to just say that you cannot, uh, use, use public, uh, public facilities on Edgewater Park, for example, for boats that, uh, have a motor or are above a certain size, you know, so, you know, so you restrict it, for example, to sort of canoes, kayaks, that kind of thing, which can be carried, um, manually. Um, because, yeah, sure, a lot of people, a few people might be annoyed that, uh, they can't bring their massive boats, um, to that dock. But is it really necessary? I mean, it's a very small minority of people that use it. From an equity point of view, people are on low income, can't afford these huge massive boats. So, um, I think you should try doing that. Try it for a year or two, making it only, um, you know, canoes, small, small crafts that can be carried by hand, you know, that kind of thing. Um, and see what happens. Uh, you might find that, uh, a lot of your parking and congestion problems are sorted out without you having to, um, create a, create a parking lot. And, um, I think it would, might make the area safer. Anyway, thanks for hearing me out, and, uh, that's it.
Next, uh, Ms. Leslie Galvez.
Hello. Hi. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, my name is Leslie Galvez. Um, I lived, well, I still live in the community house that, um, had nine mobile, mobile homes affected. Um, and I live in the trailer number twenty-one. Um, my in-laws were affected. They lived right in front of us. Um, they lost everything along with our neighbors that lost everything. Um, and I, I feel like this could have been prevented in so many ways. Um, the people that bought the property next to ours, I feel like didn't comply with city ordinances that, um, the shrub sizes had to be, I think it said fifteen feet, fifteen inches. Um, and that was the way, a lot higher, um, than the city ordinances. Um, and that's why the fire spread so quickly. It spread so fast, I didn't have time to grab much. I got my important papers and ran out with my baby. Um, there isn't much that we could do to save, but, um, I feel like it could have been prevented. It would have given us a lot more time if, even if the fire had started and the shrubs were significantly shorter, that would have been prevented. Lives could have been saved. The fire department could have put it down a lot faster. So I definitely feel like there's someone accountable for this. It was a tragedy that could have been prevented. Um, I also want to mention that there are people that live on the street that is, um, up
Of one forty-sixth.
One forty-sixth, um, that continually dump trash and the city cleans it up. And there's trash again and cleans it up. Um, and I do have the plate number and I don't, I know that our tax money goes to that kind of cleanup, and I don't appreciate the fact that there's a car that don't, they don't pay taxes on, they don't pay the, their, their tabs. We pay our tabs. It, it's unfair for them to even own a car and movie, moving it around, having their trash all over the place, making our community look worse. Um, and so I just feel like this is something that can be fixed. I know our community is a strong community, and we can better our community with making changes. Um, I, I don't know when the demolition is going to take place because I can't go into my home because they're set and I have a, a toddler that is one years old. So I can't go home and I don't know when I can go back in there until it is cleaned. The area is not safe. The air is not good, and I don't feel safe there yet. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. That is the last individual I see. Ms. Schumacher with her hand raised to address this virtually, unless I'm missing one.
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July tenth, twenty twenty-three. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. C, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of three million, five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents for the period of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of three million, eighty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eighty-two cents for the period of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. F, motion number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-five, approving the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four strategic plan. G, motion number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-six, appointing the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four youth council members. H, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, landmarks and heritage advisory board meeting minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Two, landmarks and heritage advisory board meeting minutes of March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Three, parks and recreation advisory board meeting minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Four, community services advisory board meeting minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And five, landmarks and heritage advisory board meeting minutes of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any councilor wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda or adopt it as presented? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Bell. And we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. I don't see any unfinished business or new business. Is that correct, Mr. Coffield?
Affirmative, Mayor.
So we'll move to reports by the city manager. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again. Um, first, I'd like to call upon our chief information officer, Mehdi Sadr, to give you a quick update on where we are with all that is information technology here in the city. Now, Mr. Sadr joins the city after a very distinguished career with, uh, several local cities, including the city's a federal way and the city of Renton, and we're very fortunate that he was able to come in and help us out back in, uh, about mid-January or so. So with that, Mr. Sadr.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. That's the city manager. Thank you very much. First time being here. Um, so my name is Mehdi Sadr.
If we can get you to move a little closer to the mic, sir, so we can hear. Thank you.
Uh, so I'm going to give you a little update on what's going on in our IT area. At the city, at the first six months of the year, has been very busy, kind of, uh, rebuilding our network from ground up. Uh, we started by isolating some systems and recovered and rebuilt. We put in places, we got, um, a system in place which we're being monitored twenty-four seven. Um, and because we only work forty hours a week. So, um, we put it in place, what is called a two-factor authentication, and I have to apologize if I use too many techno jargons. So I've tried to cut it out. Uh, so we put together, uh, two-factor authentications. Uh, we put a system together where all the computers get automatically updates and receive updates. Yeah. These are a bunch of, uh, um, recommendations by Center for Internet Security that we put in place to do that. Uh, after that, we moved into projects. The first project we've completed now successfully is the municipal court audio and video upgrade. Uh, so that has been completed. We also started, have completed the court, um, audio publishing service. This is where citizens can go online and download, uh, audio from the court hearings. Before, city clerk has to, or, uh, has to download that and get it to the customers, but now it's available online. Um, we've done a lot of, we're, we're beginning to work on a lot of hardware upgrade. Our computers have been, um, we have many computers that are pretty old and they need to be replaced. So we've started that. We are replacing major equipment like, uh, storage systems, firewalls, servers. Um, all of these are in different stages of the project, but going forward. We're also concentrating on business system improvements, programs and applications that directly, um, involves the departments and the department's customers who use, um, currently working with CED on, um, a system for long-term rentals and as well as the short-term rentals. And we have started discussions with our public works department regarding asset management system. And again, we continue to increase the security And again, we continue to increase the security of our network. That's been our biggest goal. Um, and uh, for that, as part of the things we did for that is we have contracted with a managed service provider. Uh, they help us implement systems that are um, somewhat too difficult uh, to do and requires a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge. Uh, so this has been a great help for us to get over the hump on some of the systems. Uh, we've done things like um, what is called the Microsoft deployment toolkit, which helps a lot in uh, getting computers ready and sending them out to the staff. Um, and uh, we implemented a system for our administrative administrator password. Um, this is again a very uh, useful system where the password actually um, uh, stops working in fact, in a matter of minutes. Uh, so it cannot be hacked and it cannot be reused anywhere else because it expires. There is a project that was started in twenty twenty one, but it was kind of slowed down. That's the disaster recovery site. Try to build a network, try to build and a place where uh, we can duplicate our network here for a major, major, major disaster. Uh, so we are looking into a place in Hillsboro, Oregon to put our data and continually updated in Hillsboro in case something happened in the Puget Sound. We have diversity, we have data are safe. Um, another work we we've started working on is the migration to cloud. Cloud computing is getting more and more useful. We have several systems already in the cloud, like our active networks, our park and recreation program, or our permitting system is in the uh, Pierce County cloud and our NeoGo or that's, that's in another cloud. Um, so I, we are moving in that direction more and more. What we want to do is with the Microsoft, move to the Microsoft cloud. Uh, which is, they call it Microsoft three sixty-five. That gets our email system, our SharePoint or um, and are a lot of applications, the basic applications like Word and Excel and so on into the cloud. Um, and uh, make it available for all our staff or all, all the employees to access these anywhere they are, they are. Uh, finally, um, we are gonna start uh, in two thousand to twenty-four, start building a new um, strategic plan. And the changes in the IT continues to uh, grow really fast. The currently we are looking at uh, chat GPT and AI. Um, and uh, these are things that will make big difference in how we do business. Uh, so we're gonna get deep into that and, and develop a strategic plan to um, to be ready for it. That's all I have.
Lots of good work that has been done and ongoing. Any questions? Mr. Branstadter. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I um, wanted to uh, to just, just, just ask about the item where you, you, you spoke about the many computers that needed to be replaced and you, you, you listed a hundred and thirty-five units to do that. Um, and that, the, the, the replacing a hundred and thirty-five units is gonna cost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is like almost not quite twelve hundred dollars per computer. Um, you, what's driving that unit cost to be that high? Like, ma- majority of them are just desktops, computers, which I didn't expect to be four figures.
What they are, average computer, average laptop computer or a regular computer that is used in offices somewhere between eleven hundred dollars and two thousand dollars. Especially laptops with their accessories like docking stations and additional monitor. Uh, then those costs go up to above two thousand dollars. These are not, these are not the Costco computers or the consumer level PC computers. These are more of a prosumer level computers, therefore more powerful, more memory, more storage and more expensive.
So is that a process that would, we would move forward with uh, an RFP to to do them, or are we going to single source them?
No, most of the time we, um, we try to go off the existing government uh, contracts, like a state contract or county con- contracts. Uh, also we get multiple bids, not bids, multiple quotes on from various vendors, just to make sure we get the best pricing.
And thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Coffield, anything else?
Of course, Mayor. I always have something else.
Of course.
Um, uh, first off, on uh, July twenty-fifth, the city was notified by the Metropolitan Development Council that they had six Lakewood clients that are at risk of eviction. And this also pertains to some of their clients within the city of Tacoma, as well as unincorporated Pierce County as we understand it. And the reason being is because they did not submit a timely application for funding for needed grants to provide funding for their clients in Lakewood and again, also Tacoma and unincorporated Pierce County. So they've reached out to the city of Lakewood as it relates to our six clients. And in summary, they are requesting one-time rental assistance from the city to help those six families or individuals um, between now and July thirty-first of next year. We did ask them, well, what steps have you taken to mitigate this from not happening before? They did respond that they are in the process, or I believe have now hired a grant specialist or a grant analyst to ensure that they don't miss their deadlines in, 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 in the future. Um, our recommendation, you know, we wanna, we're not, I'll just be right up front with you, Mayor Council. I'm not focused on MDC. I'm focused on the six individuals, the six clients that are from Lakewood that need assistance. And because of that, our recommendation is that we use our um, fourteen oh six funds. And the reason being is because this is right up the alley in terms of how these dollars can be used. Um, if the councils, oh, and um, the dollar amount, the need is seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from the city. Those dollars would then begin to be made available on September first through next July. Um, and even though um, the risk is for the month of August, LASSA has stepped up to provide the funding for the six clients for this month, the month of August. And if this council is so inclined, my recommendation is to bring this back for city council consideration as part of your next regular meeting on August twenty-first. So with that, I will pause.
Mr. Anderson has a question on that.
So let's follow the money. We use this money, who do we write a check to?
Is that a question to come? You're asking who we writing a check to? I believe MDC, but I can get you.
Who does MDC, does MCDC write a check to somebody else or these own units?
I, I don't know the exact mechanism, council member. I can get that for you.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned that if MDC has an ownership issue interest, what they're really asking for is to subsidize their budget because they're poorly managed. If they're a pass-through, they get funds from a variety of different sources, including the state and the county. And how are these people identified? They just happen to be ones that live in Lakewood. I, I mean, I, I'm concerned about the path. They've had some management issues before. And uh, I will, I'm concerned that the tenants get rental assistance. But I want to make sure that it's in a way that doesn't reward MDC for their malfeasance.
We can, we can follow up on that, Mayor. Um, in addition, the CEO of MDC has offered to attend your meeting on August twenty four, twenty-first, if you would find that to be helpful.
Might be helpful. Ask a few questions. This council is not shy, apparently, at asking questions. I only have four years of experience across examining, so that'd be good. Thanks. Yeah. Any other questions? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, kind of extending on what Councilmember Anderson said. Is there an opportunity for us to directly fund these families that are struggling with this, so we're not going through a pass-through?
That I don't know, council member. Um, and they are clients of MDC and not of the city. This is also a one-time ask.
Sure.
This is not something that they're asking for um, to be a continuous revenue stream from the city.
Yeah, I, I understand. I don't want to see funds that we spend going to pay somebody's salary at MDC.
Um, based on, you know, what, what, the conversation that the city has had with MDC is the dollars are going directly for the tenants and for their expenses, including utilities.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'd have to funnel any public funds to an agency a five-one C-three as opposed to individuals directly because otherwise could be a gift of public funds, perhaps. We just have to be careful about that.
Well, actually, actually, Mayor, um, the city does have the ability to directly provide rental assistance to individuals or families. We actually, we, we do that. It just has to be properly documented.
Okay.
Things along those lines.
Do we typically do that on fourteen oh six monies now, or do we do that out of our one percent?
Actually, yeah, actually, we do. Let's see, like, for example, with um, the situation out in Woodbrook, we will be providing you know, funding directly to individuals and families. So, yeah, we've done it in the past. We've done it with our CARES Act monies, for example.
It would be kind of interesting when you bring this back for consideration to kind of look at the, what we're doing for the Woodbrook families and these families, just so we get a sense of what monies are available and what may be left and how, how we're going to review the recommendation. That would be helpful to me, just to see what we've got and how do we allocate it like that, so.
So, so Mayor, if I, my, that's, that's a very comprehensive fiscal analysis that would take some time to put together.
Oh, really? Okay. I thought you already had some recommendations for the
Yeah, I have recommendations for the monies to be used, but as I understand it, you were looking for
Just sources and uses. We've got X available. And the recommendation is to put this pot to the MDC issue and this pot to the Woodbrook family issue. That's all I'm looking at.
Yes, um, yeah, well, okay, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bokey. Then Deputy Mayor Moss, I believe.
I guess I want to understand this. I heard your explanation and I'm, I'm actually fine with going forward with it. But just a mistake by MDC, they just didn't get around to asking for funding or
I don't know, Councilmember Bokey. Oh, they came to us and said that they had missed a deadline. That's what they had communicated.
Okay, and it's, and what, under what program is it? Under what program is it doing this?
The recommendation would be to use city fourteen oh six monies that we receive.
What is MDC's program that they're doing?
Oh, it's rental assistance.
Through the federal government?
That I don't know, Councilman.
So our fourteen oh six money right now, the agreement was we would spend it on rehab or something. So we've got extra money in there, right?
Yes, we do. We are actually having a challenge spending the money on that. Um, and as a matter of fact, as part of the mid-biennial budget review, I'll be providing you some options and alternatives on how to better put that money to work.
Okay, good, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, Mr. Coffield, do we know who our clients are that we could follow up to see that they were a part of this reception?
I'm sure we can, Deputy Mayor.
That would be helpful, I think too. Thanks.
Moving further?
Yes, Mayor.
I, I don't know why I asked such a rhetorical question.
And you always do. You always get the same answer. Um, just a couple of quick ones, but they really aren't. Um, last week, uh, we had an opportunity to go out to uh, historic Fort Stillicum and meet with um, representatives of the association, including their, their president. And um, if you recall, the purpose of that meeting was to get their feedback on what they would like to see as the area to be carved out for the city to be able to lease from DSHS, once we assume ownership of the historic buildings out there. So they did provide us a couple of options. And so we're gonna work with that and um, work with the DSHS and probably hopefully be back in front of you maybe by the end of the year, early two thousand twenty-four with a proposal on how the city can assume ownership of those historic buildings and equipment that would be then facilitated through a land lease with DSHS. Then the city in turn would assume the responsibility of the agreement with the association to do all the great things that they're doing out there right now. Um, so um, just wanted to say more, more to follow on, on that. Um, switching gears, you know, a key initiative of this council is to have a downtown park. We are working on some options and alternatives on the location and of course, step one is you gotta buy the property. Um, however, there's also the financing element of that. And um, one of the tools in the toolbox that cities now have available is tax increment financing that was finally passed by the state legislature in two thousand twenty-one. And while it's not the full-blown version that exists in other states, it is a workable tool, and we think it's something that we could use here in Lakewood. Um, it does have its restraints. For example, it can only be an area comprised of about two hundred million dollars in assessed value. And that might sound like a lot of money, but when you look at a commercial area, it's really not. But we have identified um, um, a contiguous area within the downtown that would be comprised primarily of the town center area, then going up to Gravel Lake Drive all the way up to the Colonial Center. And um, we're running some analyses on that. And long story short, based under, you know, different levels of both improvements to existing businesses and property as well as new development. For example, the housing mixed-use development that's coming in behind the Target building, to include the Target, I'm sorry, behind the Target building. Um, you know, we believe it could, a TIF could generate anywhere, could generate enough money to provide bond monies ranging from six, seven millions upwards of fifteen million. But right now, we're still fine-tuning that. Um, in order to move forward with this, and by the way, TIFs can only be established once a year, no later than June first. So that means this body would need to have an ordinance in place and no later than your last meeting in May of two thousand twenty-four. Um, right now, we're doing the preliminary work on this analysis and we would like to bring that back for your review. Um, hopefully sometime in September. And then what we would need from you to move forward, if you're so inclined, would be for you to adopt or approve a resolution, giving us the direction to do that. We would then go do all of the work, including working with the State Department of Commerce because they need to review this as well and sign off on it. Um, and so um, I just wanted to kind of give you a warning order this evening that we are um, moving forward on that. And again, we would like to bring that forward to you. Also, um, the TIF has a five-year term in terms of when it can be used, but that can also be extended and or modified. Um, but we fully, we believe that getting it in place sooner rather than later is to the benefit of what your primary goal here is, which is to have a downtown park. So again, a financing tool. Um, also want to point out that a TIF is really just a reallocation of existing property taxes from new growth. It is not a tax increase. It's not a tax increase. Um, it will also require collaboration and partnership with a number of our special districts as well. So um, that's a key caveat as well. But again, in order for us to move forward with doing this, based on the prescribed process by the state legislature, we need a resolution from you. So that's our motivation for bringing that forward too. So more, more to follow on that. Um, to continue our uh, great uh, road and sidewalk infrastructure um, projects, uh, the Public Works Engineering Department submitted three applications last week to the Transportation Improvement Board. Um, one of the things that we do is we meet with the TIB, with their representatives to get their feel for what we're considering um, applying for. So quite frankly, we don't waste our time. Um, the number one project that they did like is Military Road from the end of Washington Boulevard up to uh, one twelfth because that completes that corridor. So we think that that could well get some traction. The other is a traffic signal at Ninety-second in South Tacoma Way. They kind of like that one. And then the one that they're kind of back and forth, which we really, really like, is fixing Custer Road between Bridgeport and Seventy-Fifth, that commercial corridor there. But that's one that they kind of go hot and cold on. Um, how They kind of go hot and cold on. However, they did encourage us to apply for it. So just wanted to let you know that again, we're moving forward on that. And as you know, we've been very, very successful in getting TIB grants, so. Moving forward. Western State Hospital, so last week, the city issued the demolition permits to DSHS. For nine of their existing structures, which are going to be torn down to make way for their forensic facility as well, there are other ancillary activities. Out there. One of the things that we asked about was the chapel, the patient chapel that exists out there is kind of. Actually, they get a lot of nice buildings out there, but that one building in particular stands out. And that building will remain. Likewise, there's a cemetery out there. The cemetery is not allowed to be touched. In any shape, form, or manner, though I, I understand that as the project moves forward, they will be doing some. Improvements to it to kind of. Make it a little better. So construction, so once the stuff starts coming down, then construction will begin probably in the early part of. Next year or so, it's about a five or six-year process. Timeline, rather, timeline. Talking to the mayor, we got a proclamation request from Blue Star Families. Which is the nation's largest grassroots military support nonprofit organization. And they have requested that the city council. Designate the last week in September as Blue Star Welcome Week. Certainly, the mayor can do that on his own. However, given we are host community to JBLM. And given our support for our service members and their families, as well as our veterans and survivors and such. We thought it would be best if the council as a whole considered that. And so unless there's any objection. We would like to bring that for, that proclamation forward as part of your September eighteenth regular meeting. So I see some nods up there. So I will take that as an affirmative. On your calendar upcoming events, and Mayor, I'm closing in here. I'm closing in. Close into the finish, of course, Farmers Market. We have a Beatles cover band on tomorrow evening out at Fort Stillicum Park, Street Festival on Saturday. And also Springbrook Connections, they were in here earlier, and Lakewood's Choice. And they are having an end of summer celebration the following Saturday on August nineteenth out at Springbrook Park. And then also just wanted to let you know, and I know a lot of you have personally donated to this. But their Habitat for Humanity. Will be having a wall raising for the Dr. Claudia Thomas House out in Tillicum on Saturday, August twenty-six at ten AM. If you want to participate, you do need to sign up because there are some waivers that they need you to sign. And sign off on before they'll allow you to get onsite and actually provide some sweat, some sweat equity. I would also ask that you keep in mind a Saturday in October for a legislative retreat. You do this on an annual basis to look at your federal, state, and county legislative agendas. You know, this time around, it's really going to be more of an update. Given that the state legislature, it's the short session, and we're still moving forward on the larger legislative agenda that you adopted. This last, this last year. So I would just ask that you check your calendars. Maybe we'll send out a doodle poll. For October seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-eighth. I know there's probably some college football games in there that have pertinence to some council members. We have not checked a schedule on that, Councilmember Anderson, so. I would suggest you get out ahead of that.
Pac twelve, I'm sure.
The WSU versus Sisters of Charity game.
Okay. I knew it was going to get ugly, so.
Did you say legislative trick or treat in October or retreat?
Retreat, retreat.
Wasn't sure if it was trick or treat with our legislators.
Retreat.
Got it, okay.
Retreat, so. And then lastly, I would just like to. Pass along that our very esteemed Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, David Buer. Who has served local government quite admirably for over forty-two years, including twenty-seven years with the great city of Lakewood. Has decided to retire. However, he has given a seven-month warning to do that. His last day will be on February twenty-ninth. I was talking to Councilmember Bell, so I'll start worrying about that, about the first week of January. Isn't that right, Councilmember? I'll start, yeah, exactly.
Have him get that TIF thing done.
So actually, he has done. Actually, he has done us a solid by giving us that amount of time to kind of think through what we want to do there. But certainly, Mr. Buer has done some great things here in Lakewood. And one just has to drive around the city and see his legacy going back now over twenty-seven years when the city first incorporated. And he is currently the longest-serving city employee, so. For those who are tracking, I'm not tracking it, but others are, so. But with that, that's my report.
I think Mr. Bransdeter had a question for you.
Yes, thank you. Regarding the Western State Hospital, beginning the demolition of buildings. Part of the plan regarding them getting started doing work involved a new traffic signal. And a new entry onto their property off of Stillicum Boulevard. Is that going to be in place as they start to do this with the increased truck traffic and?
So Councilmember Bransdeter, that intersection is expected to be in place before they start actually building stuff out there, doing the demolition. They're fine. But that, I think the timeline is sometime later this fall for that to be installed.
So we don't expect the demolition to have as much traffic impact as construction?
No, it's going to be the, it's going to be the construction with all the.
And I guess I would just say that any of the dates in October for the. Look, look, look fine for me. However, I would think that it is. Not as simple as just doing an update to move forward and one, because I think that there are. Some things that didn't happen in the last session that should cause us to put. Some stronger language. Into our legislative things over there. And Mr. Mayor, I was wondering in that regard. In your efforts to pull together multiple mayors from within, how was that process going regarding? Public safety legislation?
Good question. We have RSVPs for this week. I think the meeting is on Thursday. And I believe we've got what nineteen to twenty participants, including. Not all mayors, but some mayors and staff members. So the nineteen may include duplicates within a city, but I think we've got what, five, six, seven cities represented?
More than that, Mayor. I think it's about ten or so.
Ten, yeah, okay, great. So we'll, we'll report back for sure on Monday.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? Well, very good. We'll turn to council comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But so I guess just first, I would like to express my condolences to the Jamestown Mobile Home Park. It's devastating and I'm really, I am very happy to see that the city is stepping up and doing a lot for that community. And so I just am excited to see what else we can do for them and how that they get the assistance they need. And then hard shift, transition, I went to the Arts Commission meeting today. And it was fabulous. There's some really wonderful things that is going to be coming, that is coming out of the Arts Commission, so. Look, I look forward for them to show you those things. It's, it's a lot of fun. They're so creative. And then last Saturday, I went to the Youth Council meeting with Deputy Mayor Moss, and it was fabulous. It's so exciting to see, I think it's about thirty-ish new youth councils. Members, and it was amazing. They have so many ideas. I really just, I love how Shannon really just brings out all of their ideas and lets them talk, lets them lead the group. It is definitely their youth council. So I'm really excited to see how that goes. And then I also had a great time last week at National Night Out. It was fantastic. Great to meet so many new people, see a lot of old faces, and ride around with LPD, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too want to echo. The condolences for the tragedy that happened in Woodbrook. I appreciate that the city is stepping up, but I. Really appreciate that the community is stepping up around there as well. There's a number of different Facebook groups that are, that are trying to get resources to the people who are impacted, and it's, it's really. It gives me a lot of hope for our community, so I appreciate that. I too enjoyed National Night Out, talking about community and rallying together. It was great to meet lots of new folks that I hadn't met before in the city because it was my first National Night Out to participate in. And I gathered a lot of questions from people that I was able to, to. Point around the city and get answered. So thanks to the city staff for helping that. I also appreciate Liquid PD has been doing a number of speed patrols around the city. Including several in front of my house, which. My, my wife and then my dogs really appreciated it as well because they were able to howl at the sirens. In talking to folks at National Night Out, it was also great to help explain and connect them with the MyLiquid three one one app. I think that is a great asset to our community and our, our staff at the city, including our liquid police officers. Connect with that and resolve problems in our city very quickly. And it's all stuff that we can track on our own. So if you don't have that installed on your phone, I encourage you to do so because you can see what's going on in your neighborhood. In regards to the MDC issue we just talked about. We may also want to consider if we can fund it on a month-to-month basis, just so that we. Are sure that they are being good stewards of the funds, so we're not giving them a large portion and. Expecting them to be successful in how they distribute it. So just another thing to consider. I'm looking forward to reviewing the IT strategic plan as it comes in. That's kind of my wheelhouse and my day job, so. I look forward to seeing that. And just a couple more things. The sidewalks at one hundred and twelfth by the high school are looking great. So shout out to our Public Works Department for getting that done. And then finally, I want to thank West Pierce Fire and Rescue for going into harm's way, both at the Woodbrook Fire and. The fire in our International District last week. It's, it's dangerous stuff, so thank you. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things on the Jamestown thing. Great work by. West Pierce, very dangerous fire, really. And I, and I do, really do appreciate the work of city staff jumping in and trying to figure out ways to, to. And, and working with everybody. It was a major event. I mean, you just don't see. Short of some, I guess, apartment building fires sometimes where that many people lose their home, not here anyway, right? We've seen this nationally happen. In brush fires and whatnot in, in other states, but really, really hit home and. I'm glad to see we're rallying and, and coming up with some really good ideas, and hopefully it'll work out. For everybody. Sad to hear Mr. Buer's, but well-earned retirement. And, and, and really just how important he's been to the city for a long, long time. I do want to echo, I, I drove down one hundred and twelve. Someone said, oh, it's done. And it's two or three blocks, and it really looks good. It really does. They just did a really nice job of, of, of putting that in. I know it's curb gutter sidewalk, and we're doing it all over the place, but it really did look good there. And, and I, and I think it really does add. Remember, a lot of people come in and out of Harry Todd. Or, or not Harry Todd, but. The stadium over here. What's, what's the other guy's name?
Lang.
Harry Lang. And. Lot of people from other, other places, so when it looks nice and it works, it, it's very helpful to the city. National Night Out, I was struck by. First of all, still, a lot of folks do it. But what really struck me is how well organized these events I went to were. I mean, people really work hard. At making sure these things. I mean, I went over to Seventh Edition Oak Brook. They had a DJ, they had a food truck. They had a bounce house, and they had, or they didn't have the bounce house. They had, they had face painting. And then I head to another place and they have a bounce house, and there's Kiwanis Park, Arborstone had a bounce house. And there's all these kids, heads bobbing up and down, just having a great time. They all look like neighborhood kids. And just the thought and the, and the energy. That was put into, to a lot of the, to the events that I went to. I mean, really, people really trying hard. And then another great note here, I hear through the grapevine. That the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is. In the state of Washington, finally signing on the dotted line here in the next couple of weeks, I see some nodding heads. So that. This can get started here in the state of Washington. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Well, in fact, it is, and Dolly Parton herself is coming next week. To the state of Washington, not just to the state of Washington, but to Tacoma in Pierce County to celebrate the state's success. So there's a few of us from Rotary that are going to meet her as part of that whole thing. So it should be a great thing for the state and for Pierce County.
Yeah, good pick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's coming to, I think it's Fantasia Cedar, I believe, on the fifteenth. Yep, fifteenth. I got to be there at two thirty. So, there we go. Okay, Councilmember Bransdeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must say, I certainly want to echo Councilmember Bokey's comments about the. The energy and effort that was put into the National Night Out locations. As I traveled around to them, they were. A bit above what they had been. There were a number of locations that were. Pre-pandemic locations, but this was their time to get back together, that. People were very interested because of the turnover of neighbors. Of, of, of working them to, to, to be there, and they, so I think that went, went on. I would say that as I, as I traveled around to the different sites, that. I really ended up with three themes about things that people commented to me about, you know, you know. And two of them had no answer. One, people always wanted to know when the Mexican restaurant on Hundred Street is going to open.
Right.
And I got asked that at multiple locations, and it was the most common question that I received. There was a great deal of interest of when the temporary library would open, and I sort of had to say there's. No firm timeline on that. There's only a firm location to be able to go and do that. But more positively, I had a lot of people comment to me. Because I, for whatever reason, my journeys tended to be following. The police chiefs. And many people commented to me on the favorable impression that they had of Chief Smith. And so I think that that is a. You, you know, something that, that bodes very positively and, and speaks to. His, his manner of, of coming across as a professional and not just a. Professional law enforcement officer, but as a caring professional that, 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 that people got. It's good to hear, and it's good to see that the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program here is going on. I, I saw the statistics that Washington State had surpassed seventy-one thousand. Young people enrolled, okay, and that here in Lakewood, we're approaching seven hundred.
Or not, I think.
Yeah, you know, you get going, going forward. So I think we're going to, we're going to be, 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 be ahead of our. What we thought was going to be the, the timeline to get to, you know, an enrollment of, of, of around five thousand eventually. But to be able to go and do that. The Lakewood First Lions Club, which is whom we partner with to provide our scholarship to our. Quality Communities Scholarship nominee was Brandon Elliott last year. The Lions Club has a fiscal year of July through June, so they just did their budget. That they're ready to write the check to the University of Washington for seven hundred and fifty dollars for Brandon Elliott's scholarship. They also budgeted their three hundred and seventy-five dollars to match ours. To have a seven hundred and fifty dollars scholarship in two thousand twenty-four for whomever is. The mayor selects to be our nominee to Quality Community Scholarship, but the. We've a little bit over contributed the last. we've a little bit over contributed the last couple of years, so we only need to come up in order to reach our three seventy-five. We only need to come up with a hundred and ninety-five dollars collectively among us this year. So if you could be thinking about when you want to donate that, we'll we'll get to get going on that. I attended for Councilmember Bokey, the Shape Executive Committee meeting this last Friday. There were two major events. One was a briefing from about where the county was on developing their spending plan on how to spend the money that will be generated by the new one-tenth of one percent sales tax for housing and behavioral health. It was, and it was an interesting presentation and an interesting conversation that there were some comments from members of the committee urging that the the spending plan that is under development not be a spreading around of peanut butter to a lot of people who want to play in that arena, but that it really be looked at for for positive things. You know, thinking back to earlier in our meeting today and the conversation about the cost per unit of affordable housing. The draft of the spending plan at, as it was presented, was that the county would spend no more than about fifteen percent of the cost of any project, but that they estimated that that would mean that they would spend about fifty thousand dollars per unit anticipating costs between around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit for affordable housing projects that would be built in Pierce County. And there were not, there was some mention about there's some interest in funding housing preservation of existing housing, but there wasn't a firm plan or strategy of how to do that and of how much money out of that, the the money that would be raised to put into that. And there was a the answer to the question about there is a firm plan to report performance measures to the county council and then to have an audit of performance measures every six years, but that the performance measures themselves haven't been fully identified or finalized yet about what they would do to make sure that the money is being used wisely. The second half of the meeting was a presentation about a study by Burke Associates that they was essentially the same piece of work that they did for the city of Lakewood that we received in our housing briefing a couple of weeks ago, but they did a a study that was for a collection of communities that included University Place and Fife, Dig Harbor, Pacific and Edgewood, I believe. And so they essentially was a lot of the same boilerplate findings that were in their evaluation of our particular situation. There was one interesting conversation because they talked about that all the communities had this quote equity problem about that their minorities or different groups within their community were not spread evenly throughout the community. And there was some discussion about, they said, well, that that is commerce's vision of the ideal equitable community, and that it didn't take into a fact that some diverse groups may prefer to congregate with each other, or some developers may markets targeting specific folks to do that. So I think it's and and it was a point of time look. It wasn't at how that had moved forward. So it was but it was interesting to see that they essentially saw the same thing everywhere they looked. Okay, because that's what they were looking for because they are trying to match up what they saw against. And I just, I'll just say with the Youth Council Group that we appointed this time, I was glad to see as compared to last year that there was fairly equal representation from Harrison Clover Park High School and Lakes High School, because a year ago, we ended up with like one student from Lakes. And so whatever has been done on the recruitment side by the young people themselves and perhaps by administrators in those the schools, we've got a much more broad representation of the community on the Youth Council for this coming year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Or excuse me, Mr. Anderson first, and then Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you. You know, to Mr. Brandstetter's comment regarding the the spread of diversity, it's by and large, it's be good in Lakewood, but I recall that my my grandparents and my wife's grandparents in separate states both lived in ethnic communities, and they chose to live there because their neighbors spoke the same native language that they did as they acclimated to American life. So there are many reasons. Not all of them are bad. Many of them are by choice. Looking back to the since we didn't have a meeting, we had a wonderful fifth Monday. Looking back to the twenty-seventh, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting by virtually, I was a bit disappointed in, as I usually am, by the rest of the discussions. This becomes more and more obvious that the staff, the staff group in King County-driven initiative is to put more and more money and of transportation money into transit and particularly non-motorized transit or non-motorized transportation, i.e. bikes and bike paths, which is wonderful if that can get you to work. But it doesn't do us a lot of good in Pierce County. And it the initiatives they're taking with respect to planning, just the emphasis on we've got to plan everything for everybody. Let's if the legislature doesn't do enough for us already. I, you know, they've they have lost their way quite a while ago. And it's doesn't appear to be getting any better, but the afternoon was better because we had groundbreaking at Port Silicon Park for the new ballpark for Pierce College, which is wonderful. They thought somebody should mention it. On August fourth, oh, I probably had a different hat on. I attended a meeting with Bill Adamson and City Manager with new Garrison Commander at JBLM, which went well. I had met him before, but got to discuss some issues and get acquainted a little better and see what their needs are. So we are working at continuing that relationship through SSMCP and hopefully getting around some federal bureaucracy with respect to their contributions to SSMCP. So I, that's all I have.
Very good. Now Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to share my condolences with the tragedy of the fire and to thank the first responders for all that they've done. We've heard nothing but good comments about the fire department as well as our police officers. So thank you so much for that. National Night Out was awesome. Many compliments about the roundabout at entrance to the park. They liked that. I was surprised, since so many people don't like roundabouts, but they liked that. They also, I've also heard about the way that the park has been cleaned out around the Blackberry bushes have been cut back. They appreciate that. So now they can see the water through the forest, so to speak, on that side. Let's see. They wanted to know when the Angle Lane Street was going to open up completely from, because it's closed, you can't go through on it at this point. They really loved the pavement of the walk-around, the dog park. They really appreciated that, and they were happy to have that completed. Let's see. I had a very interactive week with our students. I did attend the back-to-school event by incoming council, Student Council with Councilmember Vale, and they are, the students are very impressive to me as to how they think of things. And then there are ways that in some instances where we can collaborate with them to make things happen. I really like that aspect of it. I also attended the Leaders of Change student presentation that they had at Culpeper Tech, Culpeper High School. And they're amazing. They do great work. They are very articulate, and they talk about how nervous they are. And but it doesn't show. It doesn't show. They do a really good job. Brandon was a good example of some what some of the students do. And Chief Smith, oh, for National Night Out, I think Chambers Garden had the best ice cream.
Nice.
They were really impressed with Chief Smith, and he will be speaking at the Chambers Gardens Association meeting to talk about the cameras that he presented to us. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Great. Well, since we've had a little skip with the fifth Monday, there have been quite a few things. I'll just give you an overview. It's been a busy couple of weeks. In my role as your representative at Pierce Transit on the commission, there's been a lot of conversation, and we will be presented with a decision to make whether to put a stop to bus rapid transit, which was to go out to Highway Seven locale. The project costs more from somewhere near a hundred and fifty million to north of three hundred million. Part of the challenge was not all the project partners along the corridor were really aligned. Pierce Transit was kind of stuck having to do most of the coordination and most of the funding with limited funds. So we are going to be looking at what's called enhanced bus service along the corridor for a fraction of the cost. The time for the participants to take transit will still be reduced to what it is currently over the corridor. And it's really not that much more significantly longer of a travel path round trip than bus rapid transit. And so the taxpayers will save a few hundred million dollars by going to enhanced bus service versus bus rapid transit at this time. So more to follow on that. But if you have any questions before I make my vote as a recommendation, as your commissioner, let me know because that's coming up in the next week. Yes, so to speak. Mr. Brandstetter, real quick on that.
I guess, does that mean that the concept, the bus rapid transit concept would then then not be considered for the route that the second route that would come in?
No, I raised my hand and said, gee, what an off, awesome opportunity to pivot to BRT two to Lakewood. And there still are some components that go through the great city of Tacoma, but we think we would be a pretty willing partner here in Lakewood to receive BRT in a very expeditious partnership-oriented way that would be different than what they've experienced recently. That's a euphemism for saying yes, but yeah, so I think there's a possibility there. So lots of stuff we're going on. I too attended the groundbreaking ceremony for Pierce College at our own Fort Silicon Park on the twenty-seventh. Great event. Look forward to that. On the twenty-eighth, then I had the opportunity to attend the Samoa Cultural Week Dinner Celebration downtown at the Museum of Glass and was recognized there. Then on the thirtieth, I was invited and did attend with City Manager, Mayor Emeritus Bill Harrison's, I think it was ninetieth birthday, or so we sent Mary there too as well, and Mary Moss, and we got a chance to, you know, give him all of your well wishes on behalf of the council for his ninetieth birthday. So that was a great event. And then a few hours later, I had to go to the Lakewood Gardens dinner and auction celebration where I dropped a few more bills, but you know, they made a lot of money, which is good for Lakewood to sustain its operations. So that was a good event there. On the first, I attended National Night Out. Great event. Got to see at least five or six sites, and everyone seemed to embrace the opportunity to meet all of you and certainly our first responders, and it was well organized. So thanks to staff on that. Of course, earlier in the day before National Night Out, I had storytime right here with members of the Lakewood Library and certain children in the city of Lakewood. So that was a nice event. And then what else? It's just been one thing after another all week. This Sunday, I was invited on behalf in my role as the mayor to attend the hundredth anniversary celebration of Lake City Community Church as an institution in the city. So I was invited to attend. I did attend and was recognized at that, and they were appreciative at the partnership with the school district, which allowed them to utilize that Lake City, the former location for Lake City Elementary School, the park, beautiful location, perfect because it had over a thousand people there in attendance. And so, yeah. It was really amazing. So, you know, it was a neat thing to celebrate an institution that's been here a hundred years. So that was a great thing. And then finally, in my spare time, I did have a chance to drive around, look at some projects. I went down Washington Boulevard on my way to Lake City Community Church. It looks great. I know there's more to be done to finish it up. They're about three months ahead of schedule. Looks fantastic. I went and ran and my kid did as well. The new trail that is parallel on Elwood Drive that links Angle Lane to Silicon Boulevard. It is fantastic. I don't know if you've been out there yet. It's beautiful. The asphalt work and the shoulders that are going to be planted and the light lighting that's eventually going to come in, it's beautiful. And I drove by again last night and there were people already walking the trail to full length. So that's another great amenity, and I love the roundabout there at the park. And then the one hundred and twelve sidewalks. I was running down those last Tuesday. They were great. So lots of good work in the city of Lakewood. But I don't want to end without also echoing your comments that we extend our well wishes to the families and their loved ones at Jamestown Estates Mobile Home Park and the tragedy. I am appreciative of all that our first responders have done. Thank you, Chief Sharp, for coming tonight, and I also appreciate all the good work the staff is doing to put together some possible help and solutions. So with that, it has been a busy couple of weeks. So if there are no other comments for the good of the order, we're adjourned.